Twenty twenty five. F Y twenty seven budget planning guidance. Call the meeting to order. Um, Mr. Rittenhouse, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Silence, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which stands one nation under God. In whose will with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. Going to adoption of the agenda. Is there any change in the agenda or would we like to proceed as is?
Mr. Chair, I mean, does that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
We have agenda. On to public comments. Come the time of our meeting for public comments, I remind everyone that about policy, only flu, only members of the community, meaning residents of Fluvana and staff, Fluvana County Public Schools may address the board. You are, you'll represent the group interest in tonight proceedings. We welcome all community members who are here to get information or opinions. We'll actually come to polling, tell your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with any names in the signup sheet. We welcome your input if you did not sign up during public comments. The board will not interact with you, but we're listening and we appreciate your time. Anyone sign up? Or anybody wish to come down and speak? Okay. Seeing no one's coming down, we move on to um four A F Y twenty five budget closeout discussion carryover requests. Dr. Gretz, Ms. Suresh of Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Key. Uh, my, my recommendation to the board, although it doesn't really matter probably, is that we reverse these two items and do the information, preliminary information about fiscal year twenty seven and just talk about some of that. We've got a lot of information to share with you, simply because I think that could inform some of your thinking about carryover, even though we do have separate information to show with you there. Um, so if it's okay, I'd love to do it that way. Just talk, we'll do the presentation about twenty seven and let that be somewhat fluid into a conversation about carryover request. And then we can nail down objectives and just hear some of the board's thinking and we can.
I guess before we move on, I'll let the public know that there's only one section for public comment. So if you want to speak, we can back up and go back. There's not another section for public comment.
Could we maybe reconsider that if someone puts a motion forward at the end, if there's time?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying in case we hear something, you know, and it stimulates a conversation. It's hard and hard to have a comment on something that hasn't happened yet.
I just wanted to probably.
Yes, and I appreciate that because that happened to me last year, remember? And I slid a note. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gretz, it's all yours.
Okay. Are you gonna drive? Okay. So as always, this, the real purpose of this seminar is to present some high level information regarding some of the key issues that have surfaced as we've been talking with stakeholders. We'll show you some of the data from the, the community survey and the staff survey regarding the budget next year. Um, we've got issues that we've been dealing with for the last five years related to compensation and insurance, and that's been an ongoing conversation. We've taken some stabs at um addressing some of the disparities that we've found there, but we'll continue to talk about that. And we, we don't have any information to share with you about what to expect from the state, obviously, which is a large component of our budget. But what we'd like to do is just present some of this information. If it generates discussion from you, we'd love to hear that, any of your thinking. Um, and then we'll move into a conversation about carryover. We've been talking quite a bit about that. That's my introduction to this.
Gosh, I think I'm gonna let you pull up the PowerPoint because I can't get it any bigger than one or more than.
And then after today, what I'll add is, love to hear your thinking about just how this information sits with you. If you've been hearing from any of your constituents or stakeholders. And then I'd like to bring you to a place where you would maybe measure all of that against our strategic plan. And I'll just remind you of that so that our next discussion about this, we can start to line up some of those objectives with the things that we said that we wanted to do over the next five or six years. So, Ms. Suresh.
Uh, you can go to the next slide. And one more. Um, so these are um our enrollment trends and projections. So the two dark blue are the Fluvana County Public Schools projections, just based on our rollup method. Um, so we were projecting thirty one ninety five this year. The two light blue are the Weldon Cooper um studies from UVA that were released uh last January, and they uh take into account birth rate. Um, and so the, the yellow uh in between the blue is our, um, what we actually saw on, on nine thirty. So it was um a little bit more, uh, about sixty kids more than what we had projected, but uh very close in line with what Weldon Cooper had projected. Uh, the, that increase of about sixty kids um did happen at our K seven grades. Um, next slide. And then you, you can see the same kind of data, just um for two, two years worse. So the blue um is our, was our F Y twenty six projection at each grade level. Uh, the red is the enrollment that we actually saw in nine, as of nine thirty. Uh, and then the yellow um is what we are projecting for next year, again, using that rollup and um kind of the overall, a little bit decrease in projection next year is really that large senior class that's hitting grade twelve. I think we had about three hundred and six seniors this year in that class. And um just because of the incoming senior class for next year, um their enrollment's only projected at about two sixty.
And what, I, I'll just in- interject here. This, this is obviously in line with the data that we've been looking at. We've seen slight decreases in enrollment at the secondary level, but significant increases in enrollment at the primary grade level. And so our overall enrollment, as you can see, has steadily increased. Now, we hired a firm to do an independent study regarding enrollment. And they projected over the next ten years for there to be an increase in enrollment. Remember that. So it wasn't necessarily projected by them to happen in the next two to three years, but it was over the next ten. We are seeing an increase here.
Yeah, it seems to me when I look at these two slides together that really what we should expect is pretty much the same amount of population, just a different distribution from grade levels. Like, this, this isn't gonna, our student body numbers from twenty five through twenty seven are gonna be plus or minus forty kids. Like consistently. So not, not, not enough to need to like shift buildings or like do anything remarkable about yet.
I would agree, not, certainly no impact on facilities. It would have a, forty kids is a significant increase on our state number. Revenue.
Yeah, yeah, so there's some variability there, but it seems like if we're netting out at thirty two fifty five and we're projected from Cooper at thirty two sixty one, that we're probably gonna stay just about the same.
These are our current class size averages, uh, not to say that some classrooms are a, a little higher. Um, but basically it's, you know, the K seven, the core uh classroom content teachers divided by enrollment. Um, high school is, is a little trickier. Um, we do have, just because of the programming, some electives, you know, that are eight or ten kids, CTE recap at twenty. Um, so even though that average um based on high school enrollment and, and teacher is one to fourteen, that's not to say, you know, we definitely have math classes sitting at, you know, twenty six, twenty seven. Our foreign language classes are pretty high.
I, I think, yeah, thank you, Ms. Suresh. I, I really can't emphasize enough, and I, we talked a lot about this. I'm certainly open to any feedback. I can't think of a way to represent this well in a chart. At the high school level, we have kids that are taking advanced classes for which there may only be five, six, or twelve kids. I, I think the one to fourteen ratio is not characteristic of the building. I don't know how to separate those anomalies in a way that, that really makes sense when we're just trying to generalize, but I believe that the, the one to fourteen or less is more the anomaly and the one to twenty two to twenty five is probably more characteristic of what you'd see in the core academic classes. Would you agree with that? I mean.
Mr. Gretz, I'm gonna ask a question about these ratios here. What's the cutoff number to have a instructional assistant or not have an instructional assistant? Do all of these classes have instructional assistants?
I think, um, so I think kindergarten is the only one that has that SOQ. Um, and I think it's twenty four, if you'd see twenty four, twenty five. You can, um, you can have elementary classrooms up to, I think kindergarten thirty, I think.
Average.
Yeah, the average.
So that's, those are the only ones that are driven by the, the standards of quality? And then other instructional assistants that are scattered throughout the building would be related to student I E P accommodations?
Just, just for informational purposes, I went to elementary school in Virginia Beach, and I remember in the fourth grade having thirty three children in one class and just one teacher.
And I think prior to, uh, you know, we used a lot of our S R COVID money to reduce class sizes and we can um kind of maintain that just um through, through enrollment uh and not cutting positions. But prior to, I mean, we historically have had, I remember teaching second, third grade here, you know, twenty, twenty four kids in a class for sure.
And, and there's, there's so much information, obviously, that we've gone over just in my brief time with you over the past five years. But I have said before, as I look at the historical way that we in Fluvana have dealt with staffing, especially with instructional positions and instructional support positions, either not funding them or cutting them. I think one of the ways that we have addressed that to support teachers is through the more inexpensive option of instructional assistance. I, I believe that's invariably true when I look at how many we have and the other support positions that other divisions have that we don't. That's just my opinion.
What's the statewide average for kindergarten? One to eighteen still seems like a lot for, for little littles.
And what was your first question?
Oh, uh, what the average is for kindergarten?
Does the SOQ average?
No, the like actual, like, do we have a sense of eighteen is, is few or a lot by comparison to our neighbors, specifically in like the lower late levels, lower grades?
I don't know that for this year. Uh, we've presented that in the past and probably will, definitely will if you want to see it over the course of the next couple of months. I, I've, I've been in divisions where certainly the, the objective is to get those primary numbers lower than eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, but I can't tell you what they are in other divisions. We've, we can definitely update that. I might even be able to do it today.
I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve that problem today.
Sure.
Don't make it a, a top priority to answer, like in this moment. I just, I'm curious just because it's a lot of littles. And I know that we struggled with getting to twelve classrooms and kind of had to piece things together a couple of years ago when we had kind of some unexpected enrollments and higher numbers, what were we like, two sixty or, I don't think it's in this, but feel like no, must not have been two sixty, but it was well over two hundred something.
Two forty, yeah.
That was a big year, and so just wanted to make sure that we're doing our best to have as few kindergarteners in class as possible.
So the next slide is um, does look at a comparison, so I can go back and look at state average or comparison for uh class sizes, but this looks at um the number of students in each uh of these population groups uh divided by that division's total enrollment to just get a, a percentage. So uh it's looking at um percentage of sped, ESL, disadvantaged, uh foster and homeless for each uh, each of the school divisions. Um, I was surprised that our foster rate was actually the, the same as Charlottesville. Um, and we do have the highest sped rate of those uh divisions being compared.
Yeah, I'm stunned by the sped. So, you know, I, I've heard the doom and gloom from the community historically that if we were to provide a um, if we actually provide services to our sped kids, then, then the surrounding counties will want to come here and take advantage of sped and all of that. All that said, do we have an understanding to causal mechanism? Why is it that we have such a higher sped rate? And it looks like Louisa is also higher. Do we think that we are better at identification? Or do we think that the like character of our student body is meaningfully different?
We have, the past uh five years, um definitely been identifying uh more than what we had before, but I will also say like when you look at students that are transferring into us, um of those transfer ends, um definitely, especially throughout the year, um tend to seem more students that are special education than not.
And do we get a lot of those from the surrounding counties? Interesting. Thanks.
I would also add that I think that um Fluvana does a good job implementing child find. And I don't know that, when I, when I travel around just like and talk to other parents and special needs groups, um, there's like, I'm surprised to find that people don't know how to get started. And in, and when you go and say you need to look for child find on your school's website, if you Google Fluvana County Public Schools Child Find, you find it and you find who to contact. If you do that in some surrounding counties, you do not. You know, and so I, I recently helped a family who's got a new diagnosis and trying to get started with Medicaid waiver and everything. And I was really surprised um how many barriers there were in contrast to what I experienced as a parent in Fluvana. And that, it's the initial steps.
It's good to hear, thank you.
So next slide is uh looking at per people expenditure for Fluvana County um over the last five years, six years. Um, and then there's the, the statewide average. I will say the slight decrease uh from twenty four to twenty five. Um, there were two things that I think were impacting it. Um, we got less S R, uh federal funding, um and then also we were down student enrollment just a little bit. And the next slide is a comparison of those same divisions for per people funding. Um, and then you can see it broken down. Uh, red is the first amount of federal funds, uh, blue is state, um gray is local, and then I did a sales tax comparison as well at the bottom.
So Fluvana is the third from the left. Just if people can't see, it go, from the left goes Alamo, Charlotteville, Savannah, Goochland, Louisa, and then the state average is all the way on the right.
So does this suggest that we have the lowest L C I of the surrounding if our state funding is the highest? On average, or is that a mix of, or? I don't know how to think about that.
Yes. But just looking at these divisions, we, we would have the lowest L C I.
Okay.
But I don't know that this chart necessarily took that into consideration.
I mean, it, I mean, it does in a way, right? Like, it's the total state funding divided by students.
Yes, I think just by default it's gonna display that. Louisa would be the.
And then on the next slide, um, is looking at our uh graduation rate. Um, so we do have the, the second highest of, of those that are compared and are above the state average.
Yeah, I feel like that our number used to be ninety eight or something, like when I first came on this board. Have we seen any? I, I know that the difference between ninety five and a hundred seems small, but it's students who get a diploma and students who don't. Do we know if we're losing more students on average year over year than we have historically?
I think definitely since the pandemic, it was after the pandemic, there were, there were more students that didn't finish, more students that dropped out.
And I just feel like the first year when Chuck was here, it might have been ninety eight or something.
It's true.
Hmm, true that. Yeah, that's right, we were using that statistic for a while.
Next slide, so one more. Um, so this is just a kind of just, I feel like I put it in there as just a reference if we wanted to go back and look just in terms of a snapshot of what we've done with um compensation and, and health insurance over the last six years.
And, and do you mind if we just, real quickly just summarize this? So twenty twenty one, there was a step with a minimum one percent increase for all staff. Sometimes we do a step or a, a percent or whatever the percent is, whichever is higher, sometimes we're able to do both. And then um health insurance rates were passed off to staff that year. In twenty one, twenty two, a step with a minimum of five percent increase. In twenty two, twenty three, there were several different things that we did. So there was the step or five percent, whichever was the higher of those two. The additional two percent that went to certain scales, the instructional assistants, the nurses, custodians, administrative assistants, the, the lower scales. And this was after we did that extensive uh salaries study. Fifteen percent average increase for drivers, so we significantly raised the driver increase and brought the minimum starting pay to twenty dollars an hour. Staff were held harmless on health insurance, and that was a significant investment on behalf of the board in order to absorb that increase. That was the year that we also addressed, there was a cap that was placed um on people that were transferring in. If teachers came in and they had more than fifteen years of experience, they weren't given any more than fifteen on the, the scale. And so we removed that and went back and retroactively addressed people that had come here with more experience and gave them the experience that they deserved. That was a significant year, obviously. In twenty three, twenty four, step or seven percent, whichever was higher, in almost all cases, the seven was, but there were a few because of the scales. Some scales in bands got an increase of up to thirteen percent. If you remember, this was the, the most significant year that we did. So those two years together, we really addressed the fact that we had fallen way behind. Held staff harmless on health insurance that year. And some clerical instructional assistant positions were reassigned. If you remember, we had disparity among those positions where they were assigned, and we made sure that they were all equalized. Twenty four, twenty five, three percent increase to all scales. Custodians got a larger increase based on that compensation study. So their average increase that year was eight point four percent increase. And again, the board absorbed the cost of the health insurance increase that year. And then last year, a three percent or step, whichever was higher, the raise typically was. And then the board kind of split the difference with staff in terms of the increase. And staff were responsible for the hundred and fifty thousand of that projected six hundred thousand dollar increase in order to address the cost of premiums. So the majority of it was absorbed in the budget and a quarter of it was passed off to staff. Thank you.
Yep, next slide. So here's a look at our um makeup of our staff by category. Um, we have about uh five hundred and eighty five uh staff members and that's for, for their represented.
What does instruction include? IAs, coordinators?
Yes.
Supervisors.
Teachers, yeah, any, anyone that's coded um on the payroll side or as we report to the state as instruction. Um, it'd probably be easier to say who, who wasn't instruction. Uh, so cafeteria, people in operations, maintenance, transportation technology. Um, and then there is an administration, so that would be um admin, not related to instruction, um front office. Um, if you weren't an instructional, say, you know, director type, supervisor type position. Um, I think school psychologists are in that.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
I mean, everybody else is instruction.
I was uh in the community the other day and got stopped by somebody and I don't, I genuinely don't remember anymore who it was, and I, I do my best to forget names after conversations anyway, but they were coming at me pretty hard about how of all the government workers in the United States, the largest waste was uh non-teachers in public education. That if you have, I forget what the silly numbers were, I'm not sure, I believe the source anyway, but twelve million federal workers, how six million of them were in education. Now, three million of them were non-teachers. And what an enormous waste of a category of, of humans and expenditure that was. And I just thought like, yeah, not, not everybody in a school division's gonna be a classroom teacher. And you try teaching a classroom without the I T and the cafeteria and getting kids to the school and having social workers and having school counselors. And so while that person may have found that statistic startling for some reason, like, I can't imagine trying to educate children um wi- without the other half of the equation, which happens sometimes inside and sometimes outside of that classroom. But this kind of shines a little light on the fact that like, yeah, it might be closer to fifty than, than one might imagine.
So the next slide, uh, so this actually comes from um table nineteen of the superintendent's annual school report. So, so school divisions are according to V D O E, um, but it's a comparison look of um total instructional positions um per a thousand students. So the red is, you kind of have to look at it by color. So the red is uh division instructional positions, and that number is a count again per a thousand students. So in Fluvana, we have about one point two division instructional positions per a thousand kids. Uh, Charlotteville has eight. Um, instructional aides, uh, we have twenty six point nine instructional aides per a thousand. Um, Louisa has twenty. Uh, teachers, uh, we have eighty two per a thousand. Alamo has ninety three uh principals, uh, and A P's are in business. Uh, we have uh four per a thousand. Um, Louisa has three.
So the summary there is that we have fewer instructional stat, well, fewer teachers per thousand students than any of our surrounding neighbors.
Can somebody help me clarify, what is a division, what's an example of a division instructional position?
So for us, uh, we, it, that one point two four actually makes up, so we have a um, a math division coordinator. We have two, uh, uh, an elementary literacy specialist, a secondary literacy specialist that also supports science, social studies and, and secondary content. And then I think I'm in that number, so.
Yeah, I just didn't, and does this include folk like speech and O T and A B A? Okay, no, okay, I just want to make sure.
I can't help but notice you don't have Buckingham here. Are they lower than Fluvana?
Um, I don't know, I could include Buckingham next time. I went with the, the people that, the divisions that we typically use for like when we did the salary study comparison. So if we want to um add in Buckingham.
Well, there's no, no way that Fluvana could compete with Charlottesville, Alamo, considering the tax base that they both have. Um, or even Louisa right in here, science crossroad.
I think you.
That's just my thoughts.
You, you, you raise a great point, Mr. Rittenhouse, and I'd love to invite some conversation here if you want to give it now. We, I think it was three years ago, when we did our salary study, we compared, I, I believe we started with thirteen divisions. And maybe it was four years. It, the board was at least four years. Yeah. Yeah. That's right. And so and I agreed with this, but the board at that time really drove the conversation around, let's, let's narrow down the scope of the study from thirteen divisions, which was essentially kind of everybody in our surrounding area, to the people that we actually compete with. And, and compete, that's a difficult term, I know, to, to define when you're talking about teachers. Are we talking about competing for staff? Are we talking about competing in terms of our success rates on standardized testing? Uh, you know, what, what do we mean by compete? At that time, and given the context of the salary study, it was in the interest of of dealing with competition in terms of staffing and recruiting staff and retaining staff. Because we made that decision four years ago, doesn't mean that that's where the board is now. And if you want us to change, what we've done is maintain. And if you want us to change, what we've done is maintained that because, frankly, I think this is a good set because these are the people that we compete with. We don't compete with Buckingham and Nelson in terms of, uh, staff. However, there is value in looking at like divisions, not necessarily the divisions that you compete with. If, if your goal is to be competitive in terms of recruiting staff, then I would suggest that, no matter how difficult it is, we need to look at those that we're actually losing teachers to. If our goal is to be similar to other divisions that are like ours in terms of our school community, our size, our funding, our LCI, that's a different set. And we have chosen to do it this way simply because it, it gives, I hate the word standardized, but it, it gives some consistency to the data that we continually present to the board and the public. But I, I'd love, this is where, one of the places I'd love to have feedback. We got a lot of feedback four years ago from the board on this. And if you want us to change this, like Gemma said, it's easy to insert other divisions in here. It's also easy to, to have it be overwhelming in terms of drawing conclusions, so.
Yeah, I think we narrowed, for the sake of the harmony, that like 13 divisions and their nuances is difficult. The notion of these, this being a competitive set came from Perry Johnson's perspective as it relates to the volume of teachers, the supply and demand side of teachers and who we're ultimately competing with. When it comes to, to funding and the salary stuff, like, this is the right competitive set in order to sort of see where we are and how, uh, we can attract and retain talented staff. I think that in other cases, it's wildly appropriate to compare ourselves to more rural divisions or divisions that have similar LCIs, especially when we're dealing with things that are, that are nature of or related to sort of like cultural, socioeconomic and other considerations. And so for me, when it, as it relates to budget season and doing comparisons, uh, for salaries, this, I think we should continue this set. And then, um, when we are looking for nearest neighbor matches as it relates to context, then, then look to those other divisions.
Thank you.
I was just making observation.
Absolutely.
No need to change, that's a good comparison.
Okay.
I'll bring back Buckingham. Uh, next slide. So this we looked at last year just in terms of, um, literacy supports, uh, by division. And, and these were, um, when we went out to divisions, you know, they were self-supporting in terms of, uh, number of reading specialists, instructional coaches. The tricky thing is that, um, uh, sometimes they have dual roles within a division or, you know, what we call a reading specialist, another division might call an interventionist. So, um, it was kind of hard to align, um, align these types of positions. And if you go to the next slide, uh, it's just, uh, again, um, a look at, uh, as it relates to academic achievement. So for last year's reading ASOL pass rate, um, we weren't last. And, um, and as it relates to the, to the state average. Next slide.
One, one thing, just, I'm not, I mean, to slow us down, but just as you look at this now or just later and you process, I don't think it's a perfect, um, analysis, but I do think there's some value in just, at a high level, taking in the number of interventionists that are in place and how those divisions are performing. Again, I don't think it's necessarily a direct correlation, but it does matter.
Uh, and I will say, um, probably, um, ASOL is not the greatest, uh, representation of reading progress, which is where you tend to see the data show up, student achievement data show up, right? When you have, um, reading interventionists, so.
And, and what grade levels would this include? Like, we're looking at division averages, so what grade levels have the reading ASOL? And that would be rolled into this?
So it's grades, uh, three through eight, and then, um, I think they test it into course 11.
You know, I was just at a wedding this weekend, talking to somebody about sort of like the legacy of our meandering away from phonics and then finding our way back. And I know it's a topic I bring up every now and then, but I'm curious to what extent we're seeing, like, deficits of that, um, the, the dark age where we moved away from it in, in our high schools such that students are less, um, less leaning on building blocks and more leaning on sort of contextual clues? I don't know if that's something that, um, you've experienced, but I know that there were a number of years where we sort of abandoned our, uh, the more traditional approach and moved towards the gamification of reading.
Now, the next slide is, um, same kind of overview, but with math supports by division. And then on the next slide, um, is a look at, uh, math ASOL pass rates by division. We have had steady improvement over the last, uh, three years with our, with our math.
Louisa doing, they are just straight crushing our numbers. So lots of specialist and interventionist on math and reading. I mean, it's our closest neighbor and they're 11 points up on, on, um, pass rates for reading and they're was it nine points up, um, on math?
Um, yeah, they had a lot of intervention.
They certainly do. Stunning.
So if you go, one more slide, um, so this is a look at, um, number of positions that are focused on social work, mental health, outreach, attendance.
Fifty.
Fifty, oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow.
And then on the next slide, uh, this will look at, uh, a chronic absenteeism, uh, data we looked at last week, but a division comparison. And so while you can look in the top left and you can see Flavanna County, you know, in 2122, we were at 42% of our students were chronically absent and we're now at 25%. So we, uh, had a lot of success, but when you look, then over to the right, you know, in comparison to other divisions, we are still very far from where we would like to be in.
This is ridiculous. This is full stop nonsense. Our kids need to be in the building and we gotta figure out how to get them in the building. They can't learn if they're not there. And if attendance aides and/or new strategies do not appear in our carryover request and our budget for next year, I don't know what on earth we're doing here. Like, I asked for it because I wanted to see it and I knew it wasn't gonna be pretty. This is nonsense. Full stop.
So when we, we sat, uh, this year at the beginning of the year, like we do every year, but when we kind of said, you know, uh, we're asking teachers, what did they feel like was the biggest barrier? Or, you know, support needed, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, our achievement data in comparison to where we're at, where the state is, where some of our neighboring divisions are. They did report, you know, student attendance, uh, was a huge factor. And, you know, when you look at the difference between Flavanna and Louisa, and then you think back to, you know, ASOL pass rates, Flavanna and Louisa.
What's our, what's our like contact rate and, and cadence with this, right? So like, this is telling me that one out of every four kids is missing 17 days in a year. Like, when are we, when are we calling home? When are people getting in a har? What would it take to, to get these kids in their seats where they belong?
Can, if.
Sorry, I'm frustrated and I, I'm gonna try to chill out a little bit, but this annoyed me the other day. The comparison annoys me more and we just gotta, they just gotta be in the building.
We're gonna do a presentation for the board at the November meeting about all of the ways that we're intervening on attendance? Can we, do you mind if we just wait for that?
I mean, we can't, we're gonna talk about it, it's obviously embedded in our broader conversation on carryover request. And aside from that, yes, I just, we gotta learn what these other divisions are doing, that they're not suffering. I mean, we have twice the absenteeism at Almah, I'll guess. Like, that is wild. And, like, yeah. So I am open to all suggestions and to learning from our neighbors and to figuring out what they're doing because clearly, other divisions have figured it out and we have not yet. And that's not a indictment on anyone in particular or, or systems. It's just, when we look at the numbers, it's the case. And so this has to be our low point.
Yeah, and, and again, we'll fill in the gaps, I think, with this presentation and we'll bring some of our staff here, right? We, we are making phone calls, we are connecting with families. We have staff that drive out to homes to pick up students, to bring them. We have a, a lot of people who are working very hard to make these things happen.
And I'm not diminishing their efforts and/or minimizing the like great lengths that everybody is going to. It's just that we still have a 25% fail rate. And I know that we're partners with the community, we're partners with the families, that we have some, some dire needs, but this just has to be solved and.
Well, one of the previous slides, I'm sorry, I don't remember which one. It was talking about counselors, mental health, social workers. Can we look at that one again? Not the attendance one specifically, but.
The, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
I mean, you know, maybe some of those people in that category, um, where we are having the least amount play a role in that.
I think we're like, we have four that are, um, work on attendance but have other, you know, job functions. I think at like Louisa's number of seven, was it five, five were, are solely for attendance.
Five of the 50, or?
No, I'm just playing with Pete a little bit, so fi- five attendance people.
Who are dedicated just to attendance. And as you'll see, when we do our presentation, we have, we have a lot of hands in the fire. We, we, in terms of people whose job is just to deal with attendance.
Right.
And I, you know, I, I might even suggest to you, Dr. Kelly, I, I do think we partner with families. But I, I don't think that's a 50/50 partnership. I mean, there's only so far the schools can go in terms of impacting whether a student actually gets to school or not.
Do we have an idea of, uh, what grades are absent more? I think that.
Oh, it's, it's the, the high school's 33, the middle school's 25, and the two elementaries are 11 and 12. I remember that from last meeting because it is staggering.
I enjoyed going to school before I got my driver's license. Then I got sidetracked. I'd go to Charlottesville or pick up some of my buddies or whatever.
Sure.
I wasn't delinquent, you know, so to speak, and I attended fairly regularly.
And, and I do know as kids get older, you kind of let them go to their own doctor's appointments. And I know I let my son, he has work to do, he can go by himself, he drives. Dentist appointments, you only get him during the day. So I know their absence is gonna be a little bit more as they get older. But not three acts.
As of, uh, last week, we talked about, uh, how funding was impacted by, um, the chronic absenteeism rate. So it's, so our daily student attendance is not what impacts our funding unless they're, uh, drop, you know, they're absent for 15 days in a row and we unenroll them. Um, so it's our enrollment, right, that we receive funding or, uh, we don't get penalized for my absenteeism per se, for funding.
Okay.
But it ultimately impacts all the downfall metrics, including how we're doing in testing. Ultimately, whether or not they're going to graduate, uh, move on from one grade to another, like.
Right.
Being in the seat is the ballgame, like.
Yeah, well, and so this is a little dated, but I used to do juvenile intake and probation and parole, over 25 years ago, and in Louisa, um, and on occasion Flavanna, if somebody had extended leave. And one of the things that I know they were doing there, and some of the same people who are in leadership roles were there then, so I think there's been some continuity is what I'm trying to say, is if there was a problem with absenteeism, the social workers would reach out. I mean, there was FAPs and there were services. And then if there was still a problem with compulsory attendance, um, they would reach out, um, to juvenile intake and s- uh, see if there was a findings for, uh, either a diversion hearing or a chance petition. And not in a punitive way, but in a, we, this now gives us some oomph with the court and a judge who's watching and, uh, hearings that are going to be held, looking for progress. And, um, you know, are all agencies assigned to this case doing the things that are supposed to be doing in a timely fashion? Are the resources that it will require being, you know, are they being allocated? Are they able to be, or do, you know, what's gonna happen if we don't? Is this potentially a foster care prevention case? And does that open up different funding? Um, and then sometimes there were just cases where people were not complying with all the service plans that were being put into place and being afforded at a very high cost sometimes from, you know, from CSA funding, basically. And at, at that point, I have seen judges, um, hold parents accountable and, and, and content. So I'm just saying, um, I did work there, I know what they did. And I know on occasion I would come here and I would see our former social worker, Ms. Daly, implying some of the same things back then, in a kind way. Like, I'm not talking, you know, you didn't go to school, that's not jail level. I'm talking like having somebody follow this with some authority beyond what we have and that can open up some mandated funding doors. So I think that would be an interesting thing to ask neighboring localities, like what role court services might play and at what point.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So you'd have to have a court service presence with regularity. I don't know if that's the case here. I know, you know, they're short-staffed and they have floaters and whatnot too, so.
Our, our, they'll speak to this next month. Our, our folks report that they feel like they have a lot of support from Judge Lo.
Oh, absolutely. I'm a big fan of.
In, in this regard, specifically with attendance.
Yeah, but it's gotta get to her before she has any input.
I saw Ms. Lo, or, uh, Season Daly pop up on, I think it was actually one of your Facebook discussions this morning. And I just like, nothing but warm fuzzies for her, I hope she's doing well.
Let me go to the next slide touch. So this is looking at, um, where our, just our teachers are at on the teacher salary scale in terms of step. And, um, just to try to make it a little more condensed so it fit on one slide, uh, I consolidated the band zero to five, six to 10. So you can see, uh, you know, uh, the largest number of our teachers are on that 21 to 25, uh, year step band. And then if you go to the next slide, you can actually see the counts of, of where our teachers are this year in terms of each of the steps. And I definitely have my eye on, I think it's 25 or we have 17 teachers. And just, you know, thinking about in the next five to eight years, that's gonna be a pretty big, um, potential year for, for hiring.
Remind me, are, we, at 35, we no longer have a step and they're getting the like average that the, of, of the increase, is that right? And how many teachers do we have above 35? Are they?
Six.
So six is 35 plus.
Yes.
Um, when we look at salary comparisons as we go into the budget planning, can we look at, I wanna focus on, I wanna look at that end of the scale in other divisions as well? One of our esteemed supervisors reminds me that, that we don't have steps, uh, for folks who are, um, in the tail end of their career. And I'd like to just take a look and see kind of what other divisions are doing. Certainly, as people work longer, there're gonna be more people who, um, are in that range.
There, there was, in thinking about the step 25 with the 17 people, it, this makes sense to me. I, I can't quantify this. I don't think either of us were here, or at least not in this role. But there was a decision at what, at some point, to strategically create a pretty big jump. And I wanna say it was step 15. Does that sound right to you? I mean, this is 10 plus years ago.
There's a $7,500 jump in steps around year 15.
Somebody did some anali-, I, I'm assuming, there, this is just what I'm hearing, but there was analysis that people were leaving at a certain point. And so there was a, in, a carrot put out there for people to stay. We've tried very hard to address that disparity in the scale. And I'm not suggesting that was a bad decision at that time, but I wonder if some of this doesn't reflect that.
Well, it's funny, 'cause those people who would be here 17 years, right? If we do the math, that's like 2008. So they would have been hired during the time that we're freezing salaries and furloughing staff. So it's a little interesting to kind of see that bubble there. But I remember that enormous step and how ridiculous it was. There, but I remember that enormous step and how ridiculous it was to plan around, especially as large groups kind of like cross that.
Yeah.
And it really was like, I think an average step might have been like. Two thousand to three thousand dollars, and this one was seventy-five hundred. It was just, um, I remember budget meetings six years ago, in which we. Had to worry about whether or not that cohort was gonna cross the line and how much it would cost us specifically for that step.
So if you go to the next slide, um so here's a projection uh of uh cost of of staff compensation uh. For FY twenty-seven, so um in the yellow is if everyone gets a step, and then you can see the average increase uh for each. Uh group of employees and um pay ban affected at at one percent, and then blue is if we were to do a step or one percent. Uh whichever was greater.
Why is the baseline so low, so like what is the, like, are we hearing from the state about? What they're anticipating, this is just.
Uh, I didn't put it on the slide, I did do a three percent, if you wanted to know three percent, it was about one point one million.
Yeah.
So, I figured I'd start there and then.
Yeah, one one can multiply, right?
And essentially, just to give you a a picture of what what it would look like for everybody to advance a year.
Yeah.
Understanding the pay bands are a little different in terms of how they. They would reflect whatever percent increase we just, we were able to get.
And then uh the chart at the bottom is just a look at um the extracurriculars stipends that were allocated for FY twenty-six. Um, we did look at um kind of the model that Goochland is using in terms of like using the current step zero teacher scale to place everyone. And then that's what that total cost would be in comparison, and then what would it look like if we were to then. Um place everyone by years of coaching experience, um and then you can can see that number reflected, so.
And just to remind you. So the the model that Goochland is using. I believe is the model that Flavana was using. Cuz if you remember, I was actually assistant superintendent in two thousand twelve, I think it was, when we tried to. Revise uh problems that we had with our stipends in Goochland, and we looked at neighbors and borrowed what was in Flavana to implement there. And this would, this makes sense when you just think, again, this is anecdotal, but my understanding is that at one point. The athletic director, activities director was essentially told he was gonna have to cut. The fund in half. And if if you look at where we are now and what it would take for us to just move everybody to that model, it's. Not quite double, but that model, what that did was that created scales for each activity. And we'll we'll show you this later, because this is gonna be one of the things that I'm gonna advocate that we address, but. There were scales for each activity. And each scale was derivative of the teacher scale, so the first step on the, let's say. JV tennis coach scale. Was a percent of the first step of the teacher salary scale, and that was true of all those. And the way you would matriculate there is the same way teachers do on a scale, if you, you go from year five to six, you go from step five to six. And so your placement on the scale has to do with your years as a coach. Not your years as a teacher, the amount is derivative of the teacher scale. And you would move up each year.
So I like it in theory, it has some assumptions built into it that we need to like tussle out a little bit. We also need to make sure that if we were to. Like, I genuinely believe that our coaching and stipend system needs an overhaul. But if we're gonna do it, it needs to be inclusive of of the extracurriculars and the coaches. That are not just like main athletics, and so that means, you know.
And this does include everyone.
Okay, you know, we just had to go back and and do a little Band-Aid as it relates to arts. Esports should be on here, all of those things, and we should, um, so I'm happy to have the conversation. It is a lot of money to stack up against other needs as well, to, you know, come up with an extra. Was it a hundred and fifty-ish uh thousand in order to to fix coaching stipends, but. I think also in sort of like the formulaic approach, we, I might need some examples of. But if we migrated, this is what a three-year volleyball coach might make versus a. Seven-year whatever coach, and I like it if it's formulaic and it takes away, in some ways, I I find it. Wildly inequitable that, you know, a a head coach gets X amount of money and then. Can distribute it to to assistant coaches, and then. An assistant coach for one sport might make three times the assistant coach for another, and so all that lacks equity as well, and so.
That that will be the biggest barrier to implementing something like this.
Is what?
It is the fact that right now there's a lot of subjective autonomy on the part of the the head coaches, and I think they like that. And I would too if I were a head coach, but they can hire as many assistants as they can afford. And if they can negotiate pay with those assistants, then they can hire more perhaps than maybe another head coach. Makes it look to the community that there's disparity among the amounts funding the programs, and there there isn't. There is disparity about. How those contracts are negotiated with. The assistant coaching positions, and I, in order for this to work, that has to go away, and the division has to decide. X number of assistant coaches will be funded.
I mean, they can still have volunteers and.
Sure.
Right, just unpaid um coaching roles.
But what your your point, it it's it's expensive. And this is why it hasn't risen in the most recent years, because we've been so focused on addressing. Compensation and health insurance, among other things, that that we haven't been able to bring, but we've we've. We talked about it every year, and we definitely have some staff that I think are. Anticipating that eventually there's gonna be some some movement here.
I'd be happy to tackle this, it'll just be hard to. It's gonna be hard to stack up against the totality of need.
Sure.
But I wanna have the conversation and I wanna see the math, and. It is worthy for our um forthcoming budget season.
So the next slide, uh again, this comes from the school divisions reporting uh to VDOE. Uh through the annual's uh superintendent's report, uh so this is average principal salaries by division, elementary is blue, secondary is red. Um, and just to note, this isn't like comparing salary scales that each division has, but like. Where people, like an average of the salaries of of where people currently are.
I'm stunned by Charlottesville's numbers, they're, I I don't know why they're in the same range as this.
Well, and like I said, so it's not our scale, it's not the scales, I guess it's, I guess they have.
It's the humans, right.
Right, maybe um less experienced.
If 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 we have a veteran elementary principal, they're.
Yeah.
Even though the scale may not reflect that, replacing them.
Yeah.
And then the next slide is a look at um same metric, but for assistant principals.
And and I will say, this this looked very different three years ago. I mean, the the board. This one in particular, there there was about fifteen thousand dollars difference in the next lowest scale, which was Goochland at that point. And you did a lot to work on that. And it still didn't ring us up from the bottom, but it. Way less than we were, for sure.
The next slide is teacher salary.
Then again, that's a weighted average just based on where people are on an existing scale. I mean, I definitely like all of these slides better than I did four or five years ago.
The next one is instructional aid salaries.
Got some work to do here.
And then the next slide is comparing Flavana's vacancy rate uh. To uh the region, our region five vacancy rate, um and it's across administration, uh aides impaired professionals. Uh, other non-instructional personnel and then teachers, and so.
And region five includes twenty school divisions from. Louisa, Nelson, Bedford, uh Highland, just for context. It's a pretty big, geographically big.
Back comparison, we have pretty good work, we we are successful in filling our vacancies.
So it looks like maybe administration might be the one where. Where we have more vacancy than region five, what's the?
Uh, and I think school psychologists were in that one, so.
Yeah. That makes some sense.
And then on the next slide is a look, same look, region five, but looking at our uh bus driver vacancy rates.
Twenty-three, twenty-four was a good year for this. Uh, what is the, what does it look like now?
We have three, four vacant, four vacant positions right now.
Four currently, with two um that we have moving into training, prioritizing.
And and just for context, the year that you just noted, you you said that was a good year, that was the year following the year that we gave the fifteen percent average increase to drivers. And brought the minimum starting pay up to twenty now.
Uh, I remember either Charlottesville, Ibrarol, or both, having kids walk to school that year while we were fully staffed, so.
Charlottesville, keep in mind, it's easier to walk to school.
I am intimately familiar with the hazards of Flavana roads. As a cyclist, as a driver, as a pedestrian, I.
I can hardly navigate the car drop-off loops at Central, because we don't have traffic assistance from the sheriff's office on a regular basis.
It was a little hairy this morning.
Yeah, it was a lot hairy, plus the tree removal people had backed their extra-long trucks into the end spots, which. It's an unwritten rule, you don't take the last three, cuz there's not enough room for the two cars to turn, make the turn, and that loop by the power pole, but anyway. There was, however, a deputy running radar at Carries Creek Bridge at the exact same time. So, that's an interesting priority.
So on the next slide is just a look at health insurance, so um those were the um percent increases. The last three years, and then in yellow is what we're projecting uh for this year, or what we're being told to project for this year. Um, we have been in conversations with Mr. Irby, he he is adamant that he he's saying fifteen percent probably, uh. And so we're looking at, you know, going out to bid maybe and and just making sure that we're uh staying competitive.
It's a nine hundred thousand dollar increase or something.
Yeah, this, I, it's.
Nine twenty-five.
I I don't know what to say about that, we, I put a call into Mr. Irby yesterday, he called me back late, I haven't been able to connect with him yet, just to tease out. Obviously, those projections are based on our claims data, um, but it's a huge number.
Can we, um, as we go out to bid, and as we kind of go down this rabbit hole again, can we continue to look at? Proactive programs that reward staff for doing the routine things and maintaining health so that. Like, I would love to use the the carrot more, and lord knows I'm, I shouldn't be throwing stones, um. I am not exactly a specimen of 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 perfect health, but. You know, if it's related to our claims data and to the extent that any of this is avoidable, I would prefer to use incentives to. To drive our costs down instead of um having to take away basically buying power from the staff.
And and we have a pretty good one in place right now that enables staff to earn. Up to six hundred points, which translates into six hundred dollars, and that's simply because that's the maximum. Amount that the IRLs will allow you to do without taxing them. Six hundred dollars a year for wellness activities, and it basically comes in the form of a debit card that's loaded every quarter. A- and it's a, it's a great program. Because we're self-funded, I mean, the great thing about that is everything we take on is retained in a reserve fund. For you to use, everything we put out, all of our claims, comes out of that refer, that that fund, including wellness. So with whatever benefit, the program is gonna pay for that, that's not. You know, if we were in a traditional model, maybe Blue Cross, it would feel like they're paying for that. In this case, w- we are.
It's a lot cheaper to provide incentives than to have office visits.
I think, I guess my point in that is we, we can look at the way people are doing points, and I'm happy to present that.
Yeah, I would look at UVA.
But we're giving the maximum benefit that we can right now.
Yeah, I would just take a look, and UVA had a great program for a couple of years, I remember like. We went and we got our cholesterol tested, and then like the next day, we had like six hundred bucks in a check or something, it was crazy. Which is just fundamentally like prevention, right, and it was something like we do ordinarily anyway, but it was like. Hey, if you show up on Tuesday and you get your blood drawn and we spin it, we'll give you your cholesterol number, and then boom. Like checks were mailed to the house, and it was wild. And um I think that, you know, there's a lot of people. Walking around who have no idea what their cholesterol is or what their blood pressure is, and to the extent that we can. Break that glass early when things are preventable, treatable, as opposed to it being chronic and or um. You know, wi- without the long-term impacts, I think we can do some to drive this down, this is just a industry that's wildly out of control right now.
You keep going, gosh. One more. That's just a, we we looked at that last week in terms of our um three hundred and, I think eighty-some um. Stakeholders that responded to our budget survey, and then on the next slide, um. We did put out for quarter one a staff survey that uh was much shorter, uh aligned to our end-of-the-year survey in terms of uh. Categories, uh it was basically, uh they they did agree or disagree to uh these seven questions. Um, I will say though, you know, we had, it was shorter and we were hoping for more participation, uh we had about a hundred and. Maybe a hundred and ten that responded.
Can you all double-click into the maintenance or the facilities piece? So that's a larger kind of bottom box than I would expect, we have older buildings and we all know the like. Why we have older buildings and and all of that, but I'd love to know if there are particular like um low points as it relates to facilities that we can remedy.
And what what we're doing this year is surveying, refer surveys more regularly, just the the longer one at the end, we'll still do that.
Pulse checks.
Yeah. Some of these areas.
Yeah, I pulled the comments sheets, um just cuz it's a little overwhelming, um and I find sometimes, you know, there's some juicy bits in there. And um I did highlight some, and I won't take up our time, I know we have a lot to cover today, but there are some recurrent themes in the actual um comments.
And I agree with you, I think that's really where the value is in analyzing those comments.
I didn't hear so much about maintenance, I did hear some stuff about um cleanliness, um.
Sorry, and if I wanted to reread the comments, where can I, are, were they emailed or were they part of Board docs in the previous? Can you remind me?
Ms. Kreitzer handed me a copy, like a fake.
Yeah, and I I believe they were.
I think, were those end-of-the-year surveys though for last year's, we redacted, yeah, so that's last year's end-of-the-year redacted survey ones.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Um, I can go through the same process for this one, uh and redact and interview.
All right, this is the one where we didn't, right, where it would take some effort to to redact, um. Yeah, I think it might be worthwhile, so that we can hear from without. Uh obviously, we don't wanna, we don't want any information that could help um identify individuals, so to the extent that you could share verbatim, it's redacted. With two hundred or three hundred something, at least it's not like a as large a task, um, but I I do appreciate it.
And then on the next slide, um are just, well, most of these are are unknowns, um, you know. In terms of revisions to the SOQ, we're not quite sure, health insurance rates. in terms of revisions to the SOQ, we're not quite sure. Health insurance rates, um, December, the governor's budget, uh, we anticipate will be released. Um, in November, we typically get um VRS rates and, and LCI calculations and um, we, we do have a pretty good handle on student enrollment. And then uh, and definitely the one known is that uh all-in funding, uh, we have a little bit remaining this year uh in our budget. Does expire for FY twenty-six, so if you click on to the next slide. So about three hundred and sixty-five thousand was what we carried over and is remaining. Um, these are the positions right now that are currently funded uh, uh out of that. So we've got um math interventionists, one and a half, one full-time at the high school, a half-time at the middle school. We are, from an SOQ perspective, required to have one uh to support grades six through nine for algebra readiness. So that, that'll be something to consider. Um, for the uh mental health, we do have one um student outreach intervention um position that's being funded out of all-in and, and that's kind of the bulleted uh of what that position oversees. So we're, there is an SOQ that relates to it, but this position specifically isn't being used to meet those SOQ requirements. There are three uh FTEs that are required for that category for us, but you can use school nurses, school psychologists, social workers, so um, wouldn't be a position that we would necessarily have to, to fund in order to meet SOQ requirements. Uh, and then there are still three instructional aids uh being funded out of all-in. Um, and again, not, n- not being used to, to meet any kind of SOQ requirement.
A wolf.
That was another thing that stuck out to me from the last survey that I do have. Um, I think the school nurses are feeling um somewhat like adjacent to other professionals, um based on their survey responses. Like we're here, but no one knows what we do until they need us, um, or they think that so-and-so can sub for us, um, that sort of thing, so.
What do you mean by sub for them?
Like if they need assistance, like someone else can do minor roles that they typically would do. But anyway, that was another group that popped up and I didn't think about it until you mentioned it here.
That is, um.
Do, do you mind just going back to the um, the budget survey, slide thirty-four, just real quickly?
On this presentation, so.
That one. So this is the, this is the, these are the responses to the budget survey from the, the school community. I, I just think it's important to remember, this is important data. This is about three hundred and forty people. We've probably got about eight thousand constituents when you can s- consider our parents. And so I just think it's important for us to make sure and keep that in context. And not just, and I, I know you wouldn't do this, but I don't think we just look at the top three mathematically and say, well, there's our budget priorities. I, I think we have to consider a lot of things. Obviously, if that's what we were doing, we, we wouldn't have addressed the spring play. We, we understand what's important in a bigger context. I just wanted to mention that. Not discrediting this at all. Interface with our school community and our staff and I'll do the block parties. We have a lot of opportunities to get feedback. So, thanks, Josh. Are you interested in, before we move on, and again, there's a lot. We'd love to have any feedback, any thanking, any questions, additional information that you'd like regarding twenty-seven, and then when you're ready, we can move into talking about uh carryover money. Would you like to see the wellness program that we have? I can shoot that to Josh and he can just put it up so you can see how people get points, or you want to save that for another time? Happy to show it to you.
Sure. It's part and parcel of the conversation. And you said that the, it's six hundred dollars is the IRS cap before benefits are taxable. It doesn't mean that we couldn't add additional, it's just that it would be taxed at their tax bracket, right?
That's right.
Every budget year just feels so much harder. Like I, I don't remember feeling this way six years ago about sending, and granted like it was COVID and so the answer was just to punt everything to see what was gonna happen the next year. But like, I feel like every year we sit down and we're starting with like a nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase in healthcare. And if we want to keep the positions that were used from temporary funding, we're looking at three fifty. And then if we want to. Sports statements, we're looking at another hundred and fifty. I mean, the list is just lengthy and expensive. I don't know if it means that we're looking more holistically from day one and so we're just getting a more realistic kind of viewpoint of like, here's all the things. Or if things are just exponentially more expensive, but it definitely just increasingly seems harder when we sit down on, in October, November and, and do this.
Yeah, understood. Didn't get it? Okay. And I think, when you get it, this, this is just a copy of the, the wellness plan that's available to, well, it's, it's available obviously to people that participate in our health needs. If you can enlarge it and so that you can just maybe just show the bottom part, those points. And so, I s- I won't go through all these, but essentially they're on the left, they're assessments that, so a physical translate, essentially you get a hundred dollars. And it doesn't come in the form of a check the next day, obviously, but it, it, it's loaded onto a, a debit card.
I mean, there's probably a fair amount of hyperbole the next day, to be fair.
Sure, yeah, I get it. I'll let you take a look at it. Screenings, exams. The movement goals, I mean, you can track steps for thirty days. You can track exercise and there's a mechanism in the portal, the Centerra portal for you to do that. You run a marathon or a ten K or a five K. I think there's, there's obviously flexibility there. There are activities that people might do that aren't listed. We tried to capture them with exercise, you know, if somebody does yoga or if somebody walks or say whatever it is. To try to give the ability to get the same number of points. And then on the right, so at, at, at the bottom is ju- essentially just education. There are health topics that you can view on the site. There are videos and related to different topics that, it would look at diabetes or coronary disease, things like that. And on the right, there are just these uh daily habits that you, I could show you better in the portal, but they're, they're basically components. There's content that you interact with and then there are questions that you interact with every day. So there might be six or seven questions related to balanced living that you respond to every day. And uh, it probably takes about thirty days to get through one of those. So.
So without, to the extent that we can, and without revealing any personal information about any of our staff, can you provide a curve of how many points people earned in the last fiscal year? So we can understand.
Probably, yeah.
Right, like.
Why we couldn't.
You know.
We would get that from them, obviously, but.
Sure.
I would think.
Well, I think that's a good sign, or rather a signal of whether or not it's like, are staff are engaging with it? Like if, if at the end of the day, like the average person has a hundred points, then like, this isn't working, right? Like what are the, and then like what are the carrots and are things we can do? Or how can we restructure? Like what are the things that we can do in order to like encourage participation? If we fundamentally believe that the things that are up there lead to better health outcomes and less health expenditures, then we should definitely make sure that the like, take rate is where we want it to be. You're never going to like force everybody to, to do one of these things, but I think that we can make it easier, better, more attractive, all of those, if we take a look at the, the opposite side, which is like engagement.
We had ninety-seven people that received the, or participated last year, but it was um, you know, ranged anywhere from, from people who got fifty or a hundred dollars to, you know, people who maximized the, the six hundred, so.
So ninety-seven, ninety-seven total participated out of like, how many um people who take healthcare? Do we think, three hundred, four hundred?
I might have that on hand.
Okay, we don't have to do this now. I just, I want to keep thinking about it.
That has to be considerably though from before. I mean, before there were very few people that accessed it.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I have that, it's just too small.
I mean, all of it's paternalism and so I, I get it, but in a world in which we continuously have to choose between funding insurance and, and funding salaries, like gotta do what you can to get the insurance down. Yeah, y- y'all don't need to do any of this now. I just want to make sure that we're providing the like, sure, best stick possible or carrot possible, because ultimately, every dollar that, that goes to insurance is a dollar we can't provide in salary and or is a dollar that we're just gonna straight up pass on to them. Just, yeah, finding nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to hold staff harmless is gonna be a remarkable challenge this year.
Understood. Thank you, Josh. So any other uh questions, comments, data that you'd like to see? Are you, um, I mean, the, the, the bigger picture, and again, we can present this, we, it's, there's so much information that's been presented over the last couple of years. It's hard to know how much to put in any given presentation, but the, maybe the overarching point related to compensation is that we found that we were extremely low in just about every area. At a couple of years where the board invested quite a bit. Most of those, so for example, the year that there was a thirteen percent average increase given, it would have taken twenty-three to get them off the bottom. So we weren't able to get them off the bottom. Last year, the point that we made was if we aren't careful, we'll slip back if we don't continue to address it, so. In so much as that is what we're committed to, then that would be a significant probably consideration this year is to continue to progress with compensation. We were never able to close those gaps. And they've gotten a little bigger because there are divisions that had the resources to respond to our significant increase that gave their own. Albemarle, the year that we did twenty-three, twenty-four, the year that we did the thirteen percent, they gave an extra six that May, if you remember. Or maybe it was March. So they had already done the five and the six, so they gave eleven. We gave thirteen, that we were already pretty far behind them, so.
Can we, a- and you guys have, year over year, which is remarkable, updated the salary study to show us sort of high points and low points in, in comparison.
I haven't done that this year yet.
No, of course not, not yet. But as we get into budget season, that should just, at this point, be a staple in our packets is just update all the numbers and see where we're at and see where our low and high points are and you know, every year as we sort of play whack-a-mole with a, with a limited amount of money, uh, there's gonna be some people who fall behind when other people get caught up. And so I think we just gotta stay vigilant on it or else we're gonna find ourselves back in that spot where our principals are getting paid twenty grand less than the next division. Or whatever, insert job function and amount here, but.
Other discussion? Questions? Yes, sir. We're, we're ready when you are and then we can move to actually the the, the closeout discussion backwards. And what, what do you want to do first, John?
Well, uh, really I just had uh in there, I mean, so you saw last week uh in your board packet, the um, FY twenty-five kind of final numbers and uh I did, uh, let's see, it's called the uh, I think that one right there, the budget update. So just, you know, our available budget, um, that's kind of itemizing our unrealized revenues. Our, our final fund balance, um, is just over four hundred and forty thousand. Um, I can, I've got a, I've got the worksheet that we looked at last week that I could put up.
Key, in, in the, I know we continue to say this, but just the one point seven million in school construction is carried over from money that was allocated to Abrams. And once that gets started, that's gonna be depleted. Questions? Okay. And then probably the next one to the right, do you want to go over that or do you want? That one?
The, the, uh, the bottom one, right?
You want to do that?
That's really the, and I can, I've got a, the one I shared, Josh, the, well, she, or I can present it, um, just that I've got to put it in format.
So this is a spreadsheet, kind of like we've used in the past, that as we interact with you, we can move items above the line or below the line. So you can see the impact. At the bottom, there's a list of all the things that we've discussed. And I don't know whether to go through each one of those or to give the punchline of where I am in terms of just a recommendation for you. I, there's safety positions that, if you an overview, we've been interacting with Department of Wildlife Management folks. It looks like we're not gonna be able to actually sit down with them until the first week of November because of their availability. So, a- and there are questions to answer as to whether or not they can actually be deployed in schools without going through the academy entry. So I think that being a solution, it's not off the table. It's just, I don't think we're gonna know that in time to include this, unless uh, unless the, the board would want to simply say, and I think as, as I've thought about this relationship between the board giving back money and asking for some back and then hoping that that would be then used or offered to the sheriff to support overtime or uh additional positions. My recommendation would be, if that's what we want to support, that we would just let that go back to the county with the encouragement that the county, as they're able to, make it available to the sheriff. Uh, there's really not another mechanism for the board to influence that, that, that I know of. That would be my recommendation there.
So that would be, like, we can make a motion that says, so we could still go through and rank order all the, all the things as, as we want to, if, if this board wants to ask the board of supervisors for additional funds. But we could also voice over and then advocate in person that to the extent that money, that money is the fix for the sheriff's office, and I'm not like bullish or optimistic that that's, that, that throwing money is, is going to fix all of our woes in this moment. But that to the extent that that is the case, that please and thank you.
Yeah, I.
So we can do both, right?
Well, if, if there was, if there was the potential, and there may still be, we're just not gonna know until I think November seventh is the first time we can meet with them. If there's the potential for the board to contract out services, that, that is really independent of the county and the sheriff. Obviously, we would work with both of them and the county would have to give it back to you to begin with. But not knowing that, I don't know how to advise you on, on what to ask for. If you ask for that back, you can't then give it to the sheriff.
Yeah.
So if.
Well, if they issue us funds.
Yeah, if they issue it to you.
If they issue us funds and, and they wouldn't, right? Like to the extent that they wanted to do that, they would just work with the sheriff's office directly.
Yeah. Yeah, so that those are just thoughts there, I I welcome your questions, comments, or certainly your opinion about that.
I guess we don't have.
I would walk away from that suggesting that with this money that's that's limited by time, my suggestion would be that if we want to invest it in school safety, you would let it return to the county with the encouragement and whatever conversations you can leverage with the county to encourage that it be offered to the sheriff.
I'm assuming it's a priority for the sheriff's office.
Right. Understanding that at the end of the day, you can't.
I'm sorry, everybody trying to talk at the same time. I would certainly support the safety aspect of the SROs and the SSOs, you know, the money for them to be in the schools.
I do too, like I I feel like we're at a place where um I've gotten some updated communication from Dave Wells and I asked for a timeframe. Cause I said, hey, look, at first, the beginning of the year, we were hearing like November, and then we, the sheriff came and spoke to us, which we greatly appreciate, and then we're hearing these people need to graduate from the academy. And then we're like, but what about field training? And it's like, well, that's dependent, different people need different number of hours and so I talked to some surrounding localities as we often do and they are getting, giving me the impression we're looking at March or April realistically, um for those people that we are waiting on for the SRO situation to be ready to take the place of the people who've been pulled from the schools to fill that patrol gap, as I understand it. And that's kind of like the earliest case scenario, so I put that in writing to Captain Dave Wells and said, do I have this correct? Cause we just wanna know what kind of timeframe we're working on uh for school board meetings, we're reaching out to these outside agencies, we're exploring codes that the um options that the code allows, and he said, I am unable to give a timeframe. So it's going to be prolonged, is what I gathered from that. So just to put that out there.
Yeah, and and I, yeah, so.
What we also don't have on here, and I may have forgotten to articulate it, is the fact that we have a standing agreement that we would bring forward bathroom requests during carryover. As opposed to putting all of that through the CIP.
Right.
It is.
That's at Central and that's uh obviously that's the classroom bathrooms, not.
So we can think about what a chunkable size and what that would get us.
So moving on then to the instructional items and and Jim, chime in or take over at any time. The the curriculum adoption, we both kind of agree that this, the status of that at the state level is unresolved.
The timeline, right?
Yeah, the timeline for adoption, it'd be, it's hard to, it'd be hard for us to advise that we do something with that, not knowing what that timeframe would be and whether or not we can actually spend the money on that by July. So I I think our recommendation is that that kind of comes off the list for consideration. Not because it isn't important, but because the timeframes may not work out. I don't have a lot of confidence that that the timeframe at the state will be resolved well in time for us to make a good decision there.
I would suggest that that comes off, maybe we do put money back into for the SAT, PSAT.
Do we remember what the, what what's the size of that?
So.
PSAT?
Mm-hmm, so um in terms of like total annual cost?
Like if we wanted to ensure that our students had the option to take PSAT or SAT and that we wanted to fund it, like what would the total amount be that we would need to put in there?
So um when we were paying, uh for it is around twenty thousand a year, um we do still have you know, we're in the process this year and we still, as of last week, Ms. Wavens reported that she still had some unspent funds from the scholarship opportunities. We've been in discussion of like, could we find, you know, if we expended all the scholarship opportunities this fiscal year and we still had students, you know, especially for that SAT spring date, wanted to take it, um just looking at where could we find other instructional monies that we currently have to support that.
Yeah, I don't wanna take away um other scholarship opportunities, but so the way I'm thinking about this in the moment, this like broader exercise is that we should articulate to the supervisors, of course, that to the extent that retaining this money and then redistributing it to sheriffs in order to unlock SROs is is ideal, if that can be done, but I still think that we should rank order in some total to four forty three and pass a in the event that that that's not what the board of supervisors wants to do, these are the priorities that the school has. And so I I do think that the SAT, if we were to put twenty grand on that, might uh help more students start their journey as it relates to to college testing and not prevent us from um taking away other scholarship opportunities.
Mr. Horace, I'm gonna piggyback on what James has been saying, what does it cost for one student to take SAT?
I think it's fifty six dollars, we get a slight reduction, uh just division, you know, as a division.
I think if you take it at a another location, I think it's about sixty five, sixty eight or something, I think.
I will say that earmark of twenty thousand, so that's what we were paying like on average annually, cause I remember that number, cause we use that as an offset for the but um these funds have to be expended by June thirtieth, I don't, unless we did something where, you know, the scholarship funds that we've already used to help pay for, we somehow trade it off and save those again for.
Right. Yeah. So what is a more appropriate number to ensure that any student, like what would that number be to ensure that any student that wanted to take PSAT? Or are you saying that we don't?
I I'm saying right now, we haven't expended all the scholarship funds as of last week, cause I I offered to Ms. Wavens, you know, if there are, once we expend those scholarship funds, if there are still students, right, that um want that opportunity and we don't have funds for, we were gonna go looking for, but I don't have a.
Yeah, but I think if you if you broadcast it, it's free, there'll be more kids that will take it.
Yeah, I there there are a lot of families, I think, that understood the context of that and did not even ask.
How does the scholarship process work? I know I got a email.
Yeah, so we did broadcast, we did broadcast it out to everyone and uh you know, let them know there was an opportunity uh from PTSO and community group, right, that had raised funds that, you know, if they were interested in taking PSAT, SAT and one um scholarship support.
So did everybody get, everybody who filled out the form?
Everybody who filled out the form so far, correct?
Got selected.
Yes.
Dr. It's nice.
Still have some money left uh of the.
I filled out the form, I would have declined, but I I didn't get some.
It seems like Georgina has something related to SATs, it's up to you and and the chair as to whether or not to recognize.
Oh.
Andre, it seems like a community member who is involved in the PSAT fundraising has something to say, it's up to you whether or not to recognize from the floor.
Yeah, you can come to the floor.
When we were doing this project originally, it was twenty six thousand dollars according to Ms. Horace from earlier. That was when it was a regular occurrence and students were used to it being provided by the schools, so it was twenty six thousand dollars annually that was being expended for schools. For the last two years, it has not been regularly offered, um students have to pay for it themselves. So that was why the attendance has declined on that, so it's recently, the numbers have declined so much that we are assuming students not used to take, yeah, not used to paying for themselves. I am fairly certain that if the schools were to start offering to pay for it again, those numbers would rise significantly. So I would expect twenty six thousand to be the number within the next year to if the schools were to start offering that again.
Something happened, like two things happened in the same year, so we uh one stopped paying for it, but then we also went to test optional. So uh we we moved, we we were requiring all students that to take it and we were having some attendance problems on those days, so we decided to move to test optional, but at the same time, then we no longer, right, but.
Schools, colleges did too, majority of, I know that's changing slightly.
Okay, so I I think that I, in a world in which assuming we're, assuming others are open to this model in which we articulate uh a kind of broad priority for, if you can find a way to use money for SROs, do that first, but here is a a rank order list of of things and I'm inclined to wanna put SAT and PSAT funding amongst that when we ultimately start moving things above the line. I think that like number one, it's it's kind of next on this list here, is the attendance support aid. I don't, uh is forty, I imagine forty thousand is an annual cost, is that right?
Uh yes, so that, and that's just based on when we had a previous person in that attendance position and I costed it out based on an instructional aid, so it was around forty thousand per salary and benefit.
So obviously, this all needs to be spent by the end of the year anyway, so we're looking at half, half a year. I think we should put that as our number one priority beyond SROs and use it to fund two full-time, half-year contract appointments that are not recurring, to see if we can actually move the needle and and provide some more force and resources for attendance.
Thank you, Lord. Me personally, I wouldn't do it, I think it's ridiculous, you already have attendance people in place. Um I don't know what you're gonna do to get people to come to school, you they get in air-conditioned school buses, they get free breakfast, free lunch, I've been shoulder paying them to come to school. I don't know how you gonna make them come to school, if you make them come, they're not gonna sit there and learn if you're, if they don't wanna be there, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I guess my argument is like of a quarter of our kids aren't in the building, so are we just throwing up our hands, homie? Are we just done here? Is that good enough?
Who's homie?
It's you right now.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm not one of your punk friends you're talking to.
Yeah, I guess my point is like, are are we just packing it in? Do we not care that they're not coming?
Um I I care, um I think if that's something that we're talking about exploring in the future on a period of a regular, full-time yeah classified position, this might be a good way to try it and with less commitment to see if there are measurable results that could be used to argue for or against it, or a relatively you know, comparatively easy way to say, okay, that didn't work.
Yeah, I mean, it would only be a half year, but to the extent that the team can could use them and could use them effectively.
But I mean, how does, is that doable for you all, like administratively?
Go ahead.
Oh, so we did have um uh that position, we had an attendance support IA position that was funded out of All In. Um I think for three years, this was the last, it was funded out of All In, so um it was last year, um we don't have that position currently this year, but we did previously have it.
Okay, and so, Dr. Hilli, what do you wanna do differently?
What do I wanna do? I I think if we were to put the forty K in for two part-time and see if we can't get more students in our building, that we would be far better off than a lot of things. Like fundamentally, they can't learn if they're not here and if they're not, like, we just gotta get them here.
What would be the, so uh so it's an IA position, that's typically at this point in year where we have a little bit of struggle find, I think we have a couple vacancies, would there be any ramifications if we were unable to fill those two positions and?
We just wouldn't spend the money or go back to the county, and like, this is all good faith that we can find people in the community that that are well-suited to to those roles and that our um leadership on the mental health side can integrate them and get them up to speed. I acknowledge that that's di- difficult, I acknowledge that it's mid-year, but it's also like, we all saw the same numbers an hour ago, and if you're not horrified, like, that's a problem. Like, a third of our students not being in the high school is ridiculous. So we gotta do something, and this is a relatively constrained test of whether or not we can uh get some impact here by getting more staff on it.
Mr. Hilli, you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that we figure it out, but I think we need a plan also.
Yeah, I don't think this is the, this isn't the end all be all silver bullet, if you will, like, we gotta it sounds like in November, we'll hear more from the staff on that and then be able to figure out what other divisions are doing or figure out what we can do. I certainly think that this will, funding those positions will result in more students in the building, I would be shocked if we have the same exact rate um by bringing on more staff and and trying to partner with families closer.
And if we do, we know that that's not the problem, you know? Examine it further.
It's definitely one piece of the really difficult puzzle, like it's, those numbers are just obscene. Uh not to cherry pick, I I'm sort of like, I have the Excel sheet in front of me too, and and right now I'm not ranking, but just sort of like thinking through what are the things that are, that felt like relative no brainers to me the other day. So obviously, I have the attendance aid and I I've put a wedge for SAT, PSAT, it seemed like we were remiss in not having a cart for the athletics and for the ground crew um that we needed.
I was looking for Dr. Striplin, but.
The cart that can fit the person.
I know Dr. Striplin is working on it, it's not.
I don't know, where Don went, um I'm compelled that if Don comes back in the room and says that that is a need um for both athletics and for the um maintenance folks, that that should go above the line as well.
Is there a possibility to have a SSO position like at the middle school or the elementary school?
So um so the SSO grant we're doing this year, we against uh two positions at the high school is the grant. I think there was a request, uh that request there for um SSO positions did come from high school in terms of uh wanting an an increase, but I think you could definitely consider it.
I would be happy to put an SSO role that is funded by the school board, that is an unarmed SSO like the high school, I'd be happy to advocate for that at the middle school. I think that is another piece of our safety and infrastructure, granted, it's not a peace officer and that that would be ideal. But I would, un- unlike the schools hiring their own peace officers or armed guards, I would, I am much happier adding an SSO to the ranks. If that's of interest from the collective.
I became aware of a new potential resource, um I'm sure a lot of you know Von Hill, who retired uh from the sheriff's office, I understand, I think he's starting a new consulting venture uh based on school security, so I mean maybe not something to explore right now, but we have a wealth of knowledge that was previously overseeing our SRO program when it was a little bit more functional and meeting everyone's expectations, and that person's still here and he's publicly expressed an interest in continuing that kind of work, so I think that um I personally will reach out to him and see if he has any guidance or suggestions or would be interested in, you know, sharing what he has available to offer locally.
I mean, I feel like I've heard of late a couple of times about potentials for school safety coordinators or something like that through uh grant-funded positions. And so to the extent that we're, and now that seems to be driven from the like school side, maybe less the like sheriff side, so to the extent that we can invest some amount of um time exploring that, if that's something that ultimately leads to us having safer buildings and is grant-funded, then two giant thumbs up here.
Pam, may I ask a quick question? Sorry, um I saw a press release where Flannan was um awarded a grant from, I believe, the State Department of Education for security enhancements that would be going to Central, do we know?
I know in terms of, I saw the same, I saw a grant award, uh and that's about the end of what I.
And and I pulled it up and it tells, you know, what's allowable and, you know, generally what it's for, but when I went in further, typically you can kind of open more with the agency to see what the applicant requested and I just couldn't, but I mean, yay, we got six figures coming in through grants.
So so it, the the our, that grant, I think was, well, the award that we got was specifically for Central Middle School, and I believe a good chunk of it had to do with A B.
Okay. Well, that's really positive, so whoever applied, thank you.
Uh remind me the reporting instruction for SSOs, they report in. Uh, remind me the reporting instruction for SSOs. They report into the building principal?
The the two SSOs are high.
SSOs, yes. Sorry, I thought you said SROs.
So the 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 bit of discussion that we're missing was talking about, Andre said something about could we have an SSO in the middle school? And I was articulating that uh that is. I would be happy to to move that up to help share up s- some amount of security in 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 the middle school. Um, and so they report into the the principal. Is that a, is that? A role we would want or need in the elementary? Do do they provide? Enough benefit that the lower levels would benefit from us doing that as well um through the end of the school year?
That's a good question, and that's kind of what I was referring to, like trying to tap into Mr. Hill, if he's available, because I feel like he's got a lot of. Experience and research, you know, on the topic and can spit out statistics. I don't know at this point.
Yeah, I would be happy to vote for funding an SSO for the middle school position. Do we have a sense of what a half-year salary on that might be?
So I know a full-year salary benefits, and again, based on like current positions was forty-five, so.
Okay, so if we threw a twenty-five thousand dollar vig in there, that that would um help. Okay. Do you all wanna start using the the top half so, and then we can figure out the ranking as we kind of go? Um, so if we were to go, a- assuming that the chair is okay with me sort of um trying to drive towards consensus. Um, so if we go to the top and we were to move in, uh, let's say on the. Yeah, like a SSO role for the middle school at twenty-five thousand. Um, uh, PSAT, SAT, I have twenty, and then attendance support forty thousand two hundred is what I currently have in my like. Above-the-line momentary like request. I don't have a particular rank order on these yet. I'm sure we can come up with consensus. Um, certainly. For the moment, out of the like universe of things below, those those were certainly the uh. Some priorities.
It would also include central bathroom.
Well, the question is, how much and how much can we get done before the funding expires? I think that's a done, is done in a meeting.
Somebody's. Family situation, pick up his son.
I don't know, bummer. Um, okay, so. I don't know, Dan, or Pete, to what extent you can articulate what is a reasonable chunk? To use towards um central renovations?
I I couldn't do that off the top of my head.
Do we know what we requested last year? I I feel like it was either fifty or a hundred, and the goal is to um continue to chunk.
Maybe you can go pull what we've done to me.
Okay, do you mind? I'm so sorry. I just, I don't have a sense of scale, right, like? So I don't remember exactly how much goes, how far, and we won't get at that today, but um. I think if we have a a round number that can get us some amount of work done, then we're getting, we're inching our way closer towards our vision of. Actually renovating um the bathrooms in that school.
And so that was the SSO position just for the middle school?
Um.
I I would say probably start with the middle school.
Yeah, I think that's a fine place to start. We haven't. You know, w- we have some sense of um after a couple of years of what it's like in in the high school, and I think. Um, trying it at the middle school and seeing how it fits. I mean, again, it'll take an exceptional person. And it's in the middle of the year, so you know, there'll be some work to be done to to find the right person for that, but I think that's a worthy try.
So I'm sorry I had to step out and uh and take a phone call. I is, did we talk about the the switch?
No, we haven't.
Not yet. Uh, we're doing, so we've talked about. Attendance, PSAT, SAT, an SSO role. We've kind of marked off doing the curriculum adoption for the moment. We got about four or five tech-related things to discuss after bathrooms, and then we also wanna talk about the cart. Was there an update as it relates to whether or not we need the cart for athletics and the grounds crew?
Well, I I think the 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 need is still there. I I think with all of these. What I've experienced is maybe an increased level of scrutiny, that not in a negative way. But when we present these and have conversations with the county related to those questions on the right of this template. Um, there's a desire on the part of the board, I think, at least as I'm experiencing it, to see as much as possible, things. Move through the typical budget process.
Sure.
So, um.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't believe.
I was thinking about my ability to articulate these things in light of that.
And I would even argue that the cart, as I understand it, is definitely for operational, it's multi-use, but.
Yes.
The fundamental thing that I heard was there was concern that we need to be able to fit a per- an athletic-sized person on the back in a case of a a medical emergency. So I would even argue that's safety, or do, yeah, like, yeah.
Yeah, I think it should go up on our list, to be honest, and I understand your reservation and.
It's it's not reservation, it's just really just trying to make sure that we.
But also, if something happened, we don't want the rescue squad go on the track and.
What do they use now, Andre? Do they use anything now? Somebody does.
I think they put them on the stretcher and wheel it.
We hadn't, it hadn't happened yet, but the EMS, he he uh brought that to my attention. If it does happen. We have no mechanism to safely get somebody from the field.
Nobody's ever been hurt on a football field.
In Louisa, they were able to use a cart to take a kid to the.
It's not happened on our.
Well, I mean, just aside from protecting the investment of the field, like if you have. A child or whomever, staff running out in a cross-country situation, and there's just a terrain issue or a distance issue or a traffic issue, um, I just. You know, if you've got a broken TIB fib, you wanna have a safe way to evacuate somebody to get them to emergency care. And I don't know that if that's, you know, I don't know, I don't have a better way.
Sure.
That I can think of.
I I think probably what we experience, this has always been something maybe that they wanted to have, I I think what we experienced in Louisa. Gave a real-life experience to see how would we actually handle this if this had happened on our field. We don't have a way to handle it.
Were you talking about the.
The cart.
Bar- Barnett kid? Is that what you're saying in Louisa? Yeah, that's a bummer.
Um, and so.
And I mean, accidents like that have happened here. I mean, Mr. Key, Herman, you know, yes, it was many, many years ago, but he was injured with football, right? Yeah, and ended up being paralyzed um as a result, so like, we have had very significant life-altering injuries on an athletic field in Flavina County. To people um we know, love and live near and whose mom, you know, helped us all get through Central Elementary.
Yeah, so I I think, you know, obviously, the the question that I'll be asked will be, you know. If this is important, why wasn't this in the original budget request? Why, what what is it that has happened that is causing this to? To be a request outside of the process of budgeting, and as much as possible.
I, a first responder brought it to our attention, and it's something that we didn't have the perspective of.
I mean, I don't remember, I assume it's November, that they'll talk about this, that they want to address it in in tomorrow's meeting. When we're doing kind of a broader carryover, but um. That's a question I'm confident that any one of us is happy to advocate for and or answer and.
Sure.
Um, you can point fingers at me for all I care. The if the kids need it, they need it.
And I think one of the supervisors at the Louisa game that happens.
Yeah, I don't think this, I. We're obviously, no matter um. When we ask for these things, there's obviously due diligence as it relates to to planning and to CIP and all of that, but. Uh, I don't know why, but I I feel like this is a less controversial ask than than others um potentially. So I suspect we'll gain support for it, but I've been wrong before.
Yeah.
I have full confidence in your ability to defend the request on your feet and ask questions.
I I'm re- I'm not expressing any apprehension, I'm really just responding to the the. You you asked me, was there an update about the need? I think there really isn't anything new. It it's something that. We can certainly budget for, but I think we saw what it looks like to have a need in the moment, and this would enable us to cover the rest of the year. Right.
Nikki had a veteran response there. Confident you can handle it. That's a seasoned board member reply.
Not this board, but yes.
All right, do we have bathroom renovation numbers from previous?
Do have previous number, um, so the original was about three hundred and twenty-six thousand and and, but then there was some subsequent. About another fifty thousand, yeah.
I think it was fifty thousand.
I I would have said fifty was the like chunky number that we were using to sort of like pick away at um bathrooms. I feel like that's probably a reasonable number to to sort of continue to be able to run out a bathroom or two at a time. Is that, does that feel inadequate, too much?
I think fifty is a good, good start.
Nikki?
I think that's reasonable.
Charles?
Plus we uncover.
I think I was a little shy of myself, but that's just me. Only ones in Central now.
Oh, for sure, but those were the bigger ones. These are picking at the little like um classroom bathrooms, seventy-five as a.
I guess seventy-five.
Yeah, I did hear from a constituent. Um, actually, Mr. Pullins, but whom I also know, and yes, there is a pre-K bathroom need.
There is.
For a disabled student.
Oh, have, has that not been remedied yet?
I don't know, I haven't followed up. I don't think it has, but we might have taken some steps.
Yeah, we should follow up on on that one. I don't wanna.
There is follow-up there.
We we shouldn't, yeah, it shouldn't be done publicly for naming families, et cetera, but like. Let's make sure that if that's not followed up on that, that is remedied, but we definitely need to retrofit some of these bathrooms.
And I mean, it's an investment too also in the sense that um prevents injury to staff, because some of the instructional aids that would otherwise be needing to doing some lifting. Um, you know, aren't maybe able-bodied, you know, to do it to that extent, you know?
Okay, so can I see the same thing you're seeing?
Yes, we have a twenty thousand dollar difference. I have a, I have a wedge of SAT, PSAT at twenty K. In my sheet, which makes it about one seventy-two hundred.
So knowing that, you know, typically, when everybody was required to take it, it was, you know, around twenty-five thousand.
I'm I'm happy to lower it for the sake of it.
Uh, well, I'm just thinking, because so we had, you know, about that nine thousand for an offset. I mean, if there's no ramifications for not spending the money, but.
Well, yeah.
I think probably ten would be.
So, so if we were to advertise a PSAT and SAT, and I know that you don't have a crystal ball. I wanna put in a number that ensures that if we were to advertise that we have enough money to cover those who want to take it. Do you think ten grand is the right answer for that?
Is, as long as we're assuming, right, that we don't wanna do anything to, like. Trade out the the scholarship money that had already been used to offset, then I would say ten would be a lot.
And wh- what is it that's not going, what what are our students not going to get if we were to utilize this scholarship money? For PSAT and SAT, like what is that fund used for? Is it literally scholarships?
Yeah, mm-hmm, it, that we earmarked that um contribution for scholarships for just PSAT, SAT. We haven't spent it all to date, so.
So, and the, so that pot of money i- is meant to be written to students to help fund their post-high school education? Is that, what is the like, what is the normal pot of money?
Scholarships for the test.
Scholar, oh, for the test. I got you. I was like, what is this trading? Yeah, I understand, better know, so.
So before, when everyone was required to take the test and we were paying for it around twenty-five thousand, um. It's hard to tell since we went test optional and didn't pay for it, um. We we know that uh we got just, I think, almost nine thousand dollars in that scholarship fund for PSAT, SAT, and. Uh, we haven't spent all of that nine thousand to date, if we did another advertisement, you know, and and.
Yeah.
You know, I I just don't think it would be twenty thousand dollars, but.
Would you wanna go back and retroactively pay for people that didn't access the the scholarship? Make sure that happened.
That would be hard. Um, can we put ten in there and then, I don't wanna, today, I don't wanna tackle whether or not to make. Those tests compulsory. Certainly, we we changed it because of attendance considerations, but I do want to, to the extent that we're able to fund this. I wanna have announcements and I wanna have communications to parents and families that say like, listen, we have the money for this. Take, like, colleges are requiring these things more now, please take the PSAT and SAT, like, we want them to have that experience. When we were going through our data the other day, uh, the other evening. I mean, we're a full, I I, my wife asked me, like, what were the like most interesting things you saw? From that like batch of data, and of course, I teed off on our chronic absenteeism. But then also the fact that we're a hundred points lower on SATs by comparison to the surrounding counties. A hundred points, which means when our kids ultimately go and apply for colleges and they're they're compared to their peers. They're not getting the acceptances because the those tests were were lagging, and a lot of that comes from, unfortunately. Test-taking in the United States is a learned and practiced behavior, and if our students aren't doing it, then. They're not going to score as well because they don't have the experience, and so. Um, to me, making sure that any kid who wants to take these tests can uh should be a priority.
Anywho, without on scholarship opportunities.
It, I mean, a hundred points on an SAT is huge, but like, that's what we're. We test the same or or better on SOLs and then we're we're down a hundred and twenty points on SATs. Those are the, those are what matters for scholarships and for admins, so. Uh, I'm happy with ten. Um, it would be a great problem to to have more students who wanna take it than money, and which point we can figure out how to remedy that. Um, okay, so ten on SAT, PSAT, I have bathroom renovations at seventy-five. We now have below the line that we haven't addressed a slate of technology issues that I think Dr. Gertz was gonna voice over. Switches and whatnot.
Yeah, can you can you scroll down? Are you still driving, Josh? So.
Sixty-two hundred, yeah, we're alive.
I I mean, we we talked about, and Josh actually came up and gave us a little good context here. I think. Some of these things could be addressed through the the Central Reserve Fund. I really wanna zero in on the um, well, what he has highlighted there. Simply because, as you explained it, as I'm I'm talking to Mr. Gifford, obviously, if you wanna invite him up, we can, but. There there's a level of urgency around that, I think, in terms of what that looks like if that goes out.
And it does go out. I mean, you know, the recurrent power loss in that triangle, um, Dominion Triangle, as we call it.
Is, I I mean, is there anything different you would add to that, what I'm saying there? That I just think that's a little bit unique in terms of all these things, not that the others aren't important too. But th- there is something increasingly urgent about that.
I mean, I was pretty compelled by his last performance, like, I mean, presentation, I'm sorry.
Performance.
My mind here today. Um, yeah, I I did, I felt like the questions were answered and the case was made, as far as I'm concerned.
Really, all the other items, I'm really okay with putting this.
Okay, so if we were to do that, we would, and I I am also compelled by Josh's performance each and every day.
Presentation, sorry.
I'm just needling to. Be me. Um, so. We would then need to rank order these things in terms of importance and. On, uh, so the grand total is about four-ten-two-hundred when the rest of it goes up. Um, I have a inserted row where I've just sort of been in my brain where I say. SROs if possible. If if money can move things, keep keep the bud, keep the carryover and please get us SROs. And above and beyond that, um, we need to rank order, and so do we have any thoughts in terms of um priority orders?
And while while you're thinking about that, Mr. Gifford, would you agree the Promethean panel replacement is preventative? And while while you're thinking about that, Mr. Gifford, would you agree the Promethean panel replacement is preventative? There aren't current panels that are unusable that we would need to switch out immediately, but as they go out, am I right about that? Yeah.
And we did look at the um, the Chromebook version of the.
Yeah, yeah.
And so does that mean that we don't need the sixty K right now for the Promethean board?
I would suggest that 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 we either think about replacing those through the CRM or at least rank it in such a way as to. Differentiate it from something that's urgent.
And the sixty K, that would buy us what or how many?
I have not heard back from my rep yet. I asked them after the board meeting what the cost was.
Yeah, and so. Okay, yeah, this feels like something that we should wait on and then bake into our normal refresh cycle. The the sort of like computer engine to to refresh them as the physical is well, but the innards are. Needing refresh. Cause the this Promethean panel replacement, like at sixty thousand, if they're five thousand dollars each, that's like. A lot of, it's twelve of them, right? So do we need twelve Promethean panels right now?
Well, the the original. Was to actually re-start replacing the actual, the entire panel.
Yeah.
And the panels are very expensive.
Uh.
But if we can just replace the brains, it's probably gonna be more like six hundred, like a million.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't know yet, cause I haven't.
Yeah, this thing.
So we have, I think, when I was looking at it, we had about eighty of these panels. And so this was just to try to keep that very large number.
It does, I'm just trying to think about sort of like the use case for carryover, whether it this fits it organically and then also sort of the. If they're not selling them yet, we're not getting them by the end of the year, so I think that this is one that should probably get tabled. And then that we should build this into our refresh cycle in the same way that we do with our Chromebooks for the kids. So that, uh, let's say it's a five-year replacement cycle, so we're getting new sort of CPU. However many we need, sort of like broken over time, I feel like that's probably the right way to smooth this one.
I agree.
Um, not to like, I mean, it they're important, it just, we gotta, we have a tough tough road to. To get these funded and so I just think that it is different than the others.
Yeah, I agree.
So I I I have removed the Promethean panel from my list for now.
So have I.
Hey, look at this. Consensus, right?
We go to switches here.
Uh, I I've moved them, uh, I've taken off from in my working sheet, which is nothing. To do with that, I have removed Promethean and moved the other switches, the other IT issues up. Uh.
Are both of those in the same boat, Mr. Gifford, the high school and the middle school?
So the the high school one should definitely be addressed, but number twenty-two is.
I would like to see those two above the line, I think that those are fundamental and at minimum, I want the conversation. Uh, to the extent that you're available, when we talk about this with the supers. I want them to know that we have this um possibility and or vulnerability and I. At even if they don't fund it, I want them to be aware of it so that we can fund it. Um, in a CIP or other process, so this is one of those that I. I both genu- genuinely wanna get funded now, but also they need to be aware of it so that if we don't fund it and we have outages, then they know why. So I think it's both genuine and educational. Uh, which is, so we need to bring the elementary one up for twenty, is that right?
The high school chassis network.
So that one's up, so we need to move the Cisco ninety-five hundreds up.
Sorry. Distracting you.
Oh, there it is. I can't tell where we're at cumulatively, I think my numbers are different than yours, okay. So those two items, so the master live and the auditorium, I feel like the migrating on the fuel pump. Is something that the county is inevitably gonna need to do and it should just be up there as a reminder, whether it comes out of carryover or otherwise that like. At some point, that fuel system's gotta get updated. How are folks feeling on the auditorium, but?
Yeah, I'm like that, the auditorium update.
Do you wanna put it above the Fuel Master?
Yeah. The Fuel Master definitely would be more efficient and better in the long run, it the impact on the county is. We manage that on behalf of everybody and we build them, I mean it.
It's also future-proofing.
Yeah, it allows for growth.
Benefit, it's not urgent today, but it's.
I mean, well, it's the only way to have growth, right, to like add a subsequent.
That's right.
Fueling station moving forward.
That's right.
And should that happen, would that obligate you all to manage that for the entire county? And do we want that?
Uh, probably not, but.
She said yes, so.
We're we're team players.
She's got the spread.
Settle definitely as a team player.
So I have the same three twenty-five, two hundred. I have the same items on the bottom as well. In terms of rank ordering. Um, obviously, we wanna articulate, and I will articulate, and I'm sure Pete will articulate. Um, the investment in SROs being our overarching message, but beneath that. I have the. For me personally, I I think that the attendance aids should be number one, that we just straight up. Meet our kids in the building and whatever we're doing now, well, I trust in our experts, like we're not. We just don't have them in the building and that's fundamentally, like, for me, gotta be a top priority. Um, I then do have the SSO and the middle school as number two from a personal rank order perspective.
This is their spreadsheet, they wanted us to.
No SROs in the in there?
What's that?
We're not putting SROs.
We don't hire that, SROs are sheriff's deputies, so like.
So we're not gonna fund them?
We don't fund them.
Are are you asking about funding them outside of the sheriff's office in the interim while we're short staffed?
Right here, SRO positions, six eighty-five thousand dollars, yeah.
I guess it's kind of we're re- returning the money back.
Yeah, so what, the way it looks right now, as I'm understanding it, you've identified priority items and what's left over is a hundred and eighteen thousand. And you would be saying to the county, we're giving this back and strongly encouraging you to make this available to the sheriff to support SRO.
I mean, that that works fine, I mean, to be honest, they can take the whole thing if they can fully staff our schools, like. But of course, like, I don't think that they're going to need and or be able to find all the people.
Is our like collective ranking binding to anyone who would approve this request?
Oh, no.
No.
Yeah, so I mean, I get it, but like, let's keep that in mind as we, you know, sort of jockey for our positions. Like, that's how we feel as a board and that is very important, but the people who ultimately have the authority to make the decision are not bound by it, so.
That's right, I mean, who are not bound by their. Their ranking of our priorities during budget season, I think that's just kind of a.
So.
Two-hand process, I know, but like, I think it's important to articulate. This is a rank order and it does or doesn't align with our vision of what we think the schools need.
I think all of them are important.
Yeah.
Well.
I have the fuel pump last, to the extent that that's useful. Bathroom renovations above that, the auditorium just above that and then um. The cart and the other text switches kind of in the middle there. I don't know if we wanna get to a specific rank order.
I guess, is there anything else we think that should be included in the list?
A- and not to muddy the water, but one thing maybe to think about, if you're requesting an SSO position.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that it's necessary to request it on behalf of the middle school unless. We've got, maybe we would just request a position and then we would assign it where we need it, which maybe will be the middle school.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm indifferent to how that's packaged, I I think that it is a. I think having that in a building where SROs are split is just one more body, right?
Yeah, no, I'm not advocating that it wouldn't be the middle school, I just.
I mean, that's why.
To be some expectation that you do something that.
Uh, when also keeping in mind like the feedback we got from the the community survey and the staff surveys. Seems like the top two were, what, security and?
Salary.
Salary, yeah, sorry, um, so. If we're going to value like the feedback we got from our stakeholders, um, we should probably keep that in mind.
Absolutely, I keep it in mind, I I was just thinking in terms of. Working with the sheriff and with our staff to make sure that we understand where it is.
I think my only qualm is having attendance at the top because our kids are not in the building and it's horrifying.
That is a problem and that's also a safety issue because if our kids aren't here, where are they?
That is a fabulous question and hopefully we can learn more in November as it relates to that.
And so like I I I see both, you know, arguments about we do a lot to get them here already, cause we do. But if they're not here and they're subject to compulsory attendance, where are they? And are they adequately supervised and what activities, you know, might they lend themselves to and, you know, what's the danger in that?
Yeah. So is isn't, am I hearing number three would be the attendance?
It would be for me.
Yeah, the 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 county, just to clarify, the the county may or may not even ask for these rank orders. They haven't always in the past, it's not required on there. We can, when we make the presentation. One of them could very well say, do you have these ranked and it would be great to be able to articulate.
Cool to get consensus on that, so where to from here, if if the number one, two and three are. Uh, SRO, SSO, attendance. Uh, how many items do we have? I have n- nine items, I have the fuel pump at number nine, like. It, we need to ultimately renovate it at some point and we will need to, the county and or us will need to pay for it, but I feel like it is less important than the. Other items. And I have the bathrooms at eight and and we both need to make progress on it, but we also need to like. Honor and or articulate the. The like previous um arrangement that we would ask for during carryover.
I'm sorry, was I supposed to?
You, I, what's that?
Cause Fuel Master is supposed to go above the line?
Uh, I I have three fif- oh.
Cause we're out of money.
Oh, right, so I did have Fuel Master above the line, wh- what do you guys feel on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, can you put it up there and then just retrofit?
Off of the bathroom for the reason.
Sure. It's fine.
I should have done this earlier, but like, Dr. Sherbling handles a lot of maintenance and operations and facilities and whatnot. Do you have any input on this that you would like to share with us as we are trying to rank these?
I was looking, I I just texted AD Morse about the Toro cart, are those in our task order or?
We're trying.
We're working our way through.
C is the priority.
We've identified one, two, three, and I've made a proposal for eight and nine, but we haven't. Toro has not been addressed for.
Is that a six-foot cart, Dr. Sherbling?
I I just texted him, that's the one that I believe you're talking about in regards to the rescue and fire. We knew that one that is capable of getting on the field, but you would have to put the gurney, I believe is the term. Uh, sideways. That's gonna, I think that figure may be a little. Low, uh, if it's the one that that are possibly recommended AD Morse is on. Um. The central bathroom renovation, I think. Are appropriate, we'll have to communicate. If. Once we finish our current project, then we'll have to reevaluate, but I think that can be appropriate as well.
So a- and if that went down to fifty instead of seventy, I can't find it on the sheet right now, but if it if the bathrooms went to. Where are they? Oh, yeah, they're at fifty, yeah, and so for fifty, we can take care of a couple of classrooms, single.
I would say absolutely, but those are very individualized, dependent upon the classroom. Um, and there may be some additional, not to go over the weeds, we may save money on this most recent project too, so I wanna make sure that we reevaluate that. But if we have to give back and then use current, then that's fine, uh, so that we can keep moving.
But we still have a lot of single classroom bathrooms to be renovated in that building.
All of kindergarten and then some of our special ed classes as well, yes sir.
Yeah, and our agri- our agreement was, at least with the board four years ago, that we would continue to bring these on a piecemeal basis. So I think fifty a year, seventy-five a year, whatever it is, makes some sense.
I think uh, number eleven, I think that transition would be smart, efficient and effective as well.
Yeah, I have that ranked as number nine, it's something we're gonna share, it's some something that needs to be done ultimately, but isn't. Like, it's not going to impact our students in this very moment. But I do want them to be aware of it, um, how do you all feel about bathroom renos being eight and the fuel pump being nine for the moment?
Sound like a place hold.
It's always hard to stitch the middle things together, which is why I'm kinda picking on both ends and then we can sort the middle out.
Did you, Dr. Kelly, just wanna be clear, you said nine?
Does that mean last?
Yes.
Cause I have ten items.
Do you have ten? Oh. Uh, maybe the SRO thing I wasn't counting as a thing, so sorry about that. So yes, ten is fine, ten and nine then respectively. Uh, nine for bathroom and ten for fuel pump.
So we're gonna go four, four and five.
What's that? Uh, I have PSAT and the Toro cart, uh, PSAT and SAT because it's impacting the. Our student outcomes and the Toro cart for safety. Uh, Don, are you indicating that you think that number needs to be more like fifteen for the Toro?
Oh.
Are you saying that ten's inadequate?
I I would say at minimum twelve to fifteen, depending upon what the actual utility is gonna be used for. Uh, no, we're right on the money, twelve and fifteen.
So what what number to place?
I would go high, like, I mean, and hopefully you're good stewards and don't need it necessarily.
Can we put fifteen in for the Toro?
Who said five was PSAT?
I I had f- I had four for SAT and five for Toro, I'm happy to swap, I'm happy to swap those. So four for Toro and five for PSAT. And then we have left the chassis at the high school, the Cisco fiber switch for the middle. And the upgrade for the AV and I just mentally have those as six, seven and eight in that exact order. Unless Josh ordered, I got a thumbs up there.
Okay. Okay.
So to read it from the top as I have it in the moment, I have a hundred and, did I retrofit this right? One minus those, oh, yep.
Five thousand extra. Do you want me to just take it from the the remaining balance for the SRO?
Yeah, so I have a hundred and thirteen thousand three oh six allocated to SROs to the extent that money can can buy bodies in our schools. I have forty thousand two hundred next for the attendant staff. Twenty-five thousand for an SSO role. Fifteen for the Toro, ten for SAT, PSAT. A hundred for the high school chassis. Twenty thousand for the backup Cisco ninety-five hundreds. Forty-five thousand for the AV upgrade at the high school. Fifty for bathroom renovations, and then twenty-five for the fuel pump. In those orders. What do you all think?
Anything? Nicky, Charles, any?
That looks reasonable, yeah.
I think it articulates our interest in having safe schools and having SROs in our buildings.
And kids in school.
And kids in schools and some security help on the SSO front. And then articulates other needs as it relates to technology and, um, student outcomes. So I think this aligns with my values.
And I like that it puts the Fuel Master on the radar, so, like. Because we can't grow without it. And imagine at some point we'd like to grow. Opportunities.
Are we ready to take a vote?
So we still have a FY twenty-six that we haven't gone over? Should we, did, we went from, did we, we went from twenty-seven to twenty-five?
It was on on the packet. I really don't, I put, um, the information that we looked at for FY twenty-six. There's nothing new.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't skip over anything new that you wanted to address.
Okay.
So I guess that is to action items if the chair wants to move that way, or vice versa.
You guys ready to take a vote?
Yeah.
Alright, I will entertain a a vote for approval of FY twenty-five carryover request.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion related to the approval of the FY twenty-five carryover request. Specifically that we propose and ask the Board of Supervisors to, uh, return and or appropriate funds according to this rank order and amount. One, uh, f- funding to aid in SRO positions in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, attendance support and attendance aids, that's two, that's two contract positions for the rest of this year. Uh, totaling forty thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, an SSO role, again, um, half year for the remaining of the year in the amount of twenty-five thousand. A Toro cart for maintenance grounds, keeping and athletics in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars to offset SAT and PSAT costs for our students. A hundred thousand dollars to replace the FHS chassis network switches. Twenty thousand dollars for a backup Cisco ninety-five hundred fiber switch. Uh, forty-five thousand to upgrade the high school auditorium AV system. Fifty thousand dollars to continue in our shared efforts to renovate the carry, or the central elementary bathrooms. And then twenty-five thousand dollars, um, to migrate, um, uh, to Fuel Master Live. The that totals ten items in a grand total of four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. Kelly, is there a second?
I second.
Thanks. Second?
Can say if that dies on the table, then I think I'm done for today.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye.
Yeah, I'll vote, I'll vote aye, but only thing I don't like on this is the forty thousand, two hundred dollars. I think that's ridiculous, but but I'll support it. If you don't ask for it, you won't get it.
For the attendance, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse.
What if we can show a return on our investment?
How you gonna solve a problem that you don't know what the solution is just by throwing money at it? But that's that's the way I look at it.
Hopefully the November meeting, they will have a lot of solutions for us.
I see your point. I see your point.
So any, nobody, nobody oppose, so we have a carryover budget. Alright, on to six A, School Board, remember comments. We'll start with Dr. Kelly.
Uh, just wanna thank the staff for the incredible amount of time and investment in gathering information and data. Um, I'm proud to go down the hill and up the hill, whatever it is, down the hill, and, um, ask for these appropriations and to, um, have the opportunity to to discuss with the Board of Supervisors what's happening in our building and and how these, um, align with our shared values. And I will, uh, be at the Board of Supers tomorrow as we go through the the other, um, carryover requests that are, uh, potentially less controversial. Um, and just thank you all for, uh, a great several hour meeting here.
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Like James said, I thank everyone for all their time and effort into this. Uh, it's a whole lot to think of, uh, think about. Unlike what y'all are used to, just because we have money, I don't like to spend it. But that's just the way I've I've been. I've always either worked for myself or for my family, so the buck stops where I am, so I I consider all of it personal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. Yes, sir.
Um, sure. Echo what everyone else said about thanks for all the work and the prep and the willingness to answer questions. Um, I am concerned, um, about, um, special education in terms of like the reduction in force at the national, at the federal level. So not that that's pertinent to this particular con- uh, discussion, but just, uh, something on my mind. And then, um, as far as the save versus spend, I mean, I get that, like, that's how you build a cushion, right? But, um, I also feel like, as much as I prioritize it, I don't know that, um, administratively, the details are gonna work out to utilize the money for, um, S S SROs outside of the ones that we have. So if that, you know, brings any comfort, I don't know that even though we're holding it as a priority and a value, um, and, you know, hoping, I don't know that that's gonna come to fruition. So I think we will be leaving some on the table.
Sure. Agree with everybody else. I just wanna thank the board for productive meeting. And thank everyone who came to the meeting. Thanks, Dr. Grex, Miss Ores, for bringing us a ton of information.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we resign, shall we amend our agenda to allow for a public comments if the public is so inclined?
Board.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we add a round of public comments, uh, before we adjourn.
I second.
Alright, thanks for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, on to a round of public comments.
No pressure, no.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but since you're gonna let me.
You have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Ashley Crocker. I live in the Fork Union District. I would just say thank you so much for adding the PSAT funding to the carryover request. I think that's really important for our community, and I thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Uh, Georgia Jocelyn Cunningham District, again, I wanna thank you for doing the PSAT funding as well. That was our project for FLDP. We were the ones that did the fundraising for it. Um, second thing I wanted to ask, and this just my OCD bugging me. Your screen up there said the second thing on the list was SSOs. You said the second thing on the list was, um, attendance aids.
Oh, I may have been.
If somebody wants to change that, that was just, again, my OCD. Thank you very much.
Yeah, more luck.
I may have misread my ordering. Um, i- is the board open to a sorry, I'll let you finish public comments and then we'll, we can address that.
Anybody else that wanna come forward? Alright, please, second round of public comments.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, would you mind a motion, a friendly amendment to our our past um, carryover request to invert SSO, uh, and attendance, um. I, at this point now, I I think I had attendance and then S- SSO, if I had said, oh, I don't know. Do you just wanna?
I'm gonna put the ranking back.
Yeah, okay, three. Just to make sure it's a- as currently presented. I don't know if we need to make a motion for this or just, okay. Good enough.
Alright, on to seven A, German, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So missed?
I'll say.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Fifteen minutes.